Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plank City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the February 11th, 2019 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending the meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room if you'd like to comment on any items on the agenda. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Moreno to lead us in the pledge and the prayer. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with praise for your mighty power and guidance. We thank you for this day and thank you too for the many blessings in our lives, for our great country, and for the opportunity to live in freedom. We ask your blessings on our leaders, and we ask that you give each one of us here today the wisdom to make the right choices so that our decisions will be in the best interest of the people of Hillsborough County. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Powell.
Here.
Dix. Green.
Chris.
Joseph.
Here.
Cress.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Willman.
Here.
Thrower.
Here.
Wilds.
Here.
Dickerson.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Thank you. You have a call.
Okay, thank you. Next up is approval of the Hillsborough County Public Hearing on County Plan Amendments from the January 14th, 2019 meeting. Do we have a motion for approval? We have a motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Doughty. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved as stated. Thank you. Now, we are going to move on to the public input. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any items not on the agenda today? Okay, no public input. We'll move on to item number three, which is the consultant contract for the Ebor City CRA Vision Plan. Before you start, I was going to mention, my wife works for Ebor City Development Corporation, so I filled out the Form 8B, and I'm going to abstain from voting on this item, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. This is a continuation of an item that you heard some time ago where we were talking about the contractual services for Ebor City's Vision Plan. At that time, we were talking about an agreement between the city of Tampa and the Planning Commission for funds to do that. Today, we will be talking about the Planning Commission entering into a contract with the consultant, VHB. So just a little bit of a timeline of where we've been with this. That meeting that we spoke of between the city of Tampa and the Planning Commission was on October the 8th. A request for proposals for consultants was let from November 16th through December the 7th. The Planning Commission received six requests for proposals at that time, read through those. Three were chosen for interviews. Those interviews were the second week of January, and then January the 11th, VHB was chosen for the consultant selection. Here we are today to authorize this contract. This is a contract for $75,000, $50,000 of it coming from the city of Tampa, and $25,000 from the Planning Commission. The contract is to end, so the work therefore, the plan is to be updated by September 30th of this year, the end of the fiscal year. So just a little bit of information about what is in the scope of services. The first task is that of discovery, basically some of the data collection and to identify stakeholders within the greater community of Ebor City, and also to conduct a visioning workshop. So basically, that is your nuts and bolts to begin to have an understanding of what's on the ground and what we can build out of the existing work that is already there and move that forward. That conditions assessment, a CRA plan, this is an update to CRA 1 and 2, is to update and incorporate that data. CRA plans have a tremendous amount of data. Also in this, the data can be updated in a way that is a little bit thinking outside the box, and that is part of the reason why staffs of the Planning Commission, as well as staffs of the city of Tampa, were so impressed with VHB in that the healthy community design assessment, as well as a retail needs assessment, basically a little bit of thinking outside of the box. Public engagement, the consultant would like to use Engagement HQ software, so basically this is something that will allow a little bit more robust social media presence and engagement online. And then finally, the final task will be to actually create that task, excuse me, that strategic action plan, and bring that strategic action plan back to the Planning Commission, as well as to the Ebor City Development Corporation, the YCDC, and then ultimately the City Council of Tampa acting as a CRA. With that, staff recommends authorizing the executive director to sign the consultant contract for the Vision Plan Services for Ebor City 1 and 2 for the CRA areas. Again, Courtney Orr with the city of Tampa's YCDC is here, as well as Neil Straylo from VHB for any other questions. Thank you for your time. This concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Does Courtney want to speak on this item? No? Okay. Any public comment on this item? No public comment. Any questions from commissioners? Someone like to make a motion?
I move that we authorize the executive director to sign the consultant contract for Vision Plan Services for the Ebor City 1 and 2 CRA areas.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Commissioner Wilds. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We are moving on to item number four, the South Shore Circulator Study presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sarah McKinley, MPO staff. Today, I'm going to go over a transit study in South Shore that we just concluded. Back in 2014, we started this, or we did this study, and in March, HART asked us to go back and revisit that study since there have been some service changes, as well as updating the cost and creating an implementation plan with it. All right, so we had four meetings, two with stakeholders where we went out and asked them, since the service changes that were implemented through Mission Max, what are the needs of the community, making sure that the plan that we did in 2014 still makes those, or meets those needs, or how can we improve it? A lot of what we heard is they lost their route along US 301, as well as their express bus to downtown, so getting those services back, as well as focusing on the circulation throughout the community. All right, so the study area, it is a very large study area within South County. It comprises of about six communities that we looked at, and as you can tell from the map, there's not a lot of connectivity and accessibility, and they're sort of reliant on three east-west roadways, Gibsonton, Big Bend, and County Road 674, as well as three north-south, US 41, I-75, and US 301. This is also the fastest-growing portion of the county. It exceeds the rest of the county in population, growth of dwelling units, as well as growth of jobs. Like I mentioned, in 2014, we did a study, and this was the alternative that was chosen as the locally preferred alternative. I should mention, when we did this study in 2014, we did not look at the express routes back then because they liked their express service, but since those service changes and that express going away, the new study did focus on that. As you can see, the locally preferred alternative was what they called the two-way loop system, having a north loop that focused on Gibsonton Drive and Big Bend running circular motions, and then the south loop that focused on south of Big Bend to 674. There is also some flex zones that were recommended along those east-west corridors to sort of help get people from the neighborhoods and into the system. This is what their routes look like today. As I mentioned, they lost the US 301 route, as well as their express bus. Right now, they still have the flex zone along 674 that goes between Wamama and Ruskin and Sun City Center, but they also, their only other route is the US 41 that goes to the Brandon Mall. There is one park-and-ride at Gibsonton Drive and Boyette that allows them to get into the Fish Hawk Express service today. So as I mentioned, their biggest things were utilizing US 301 again, as well as getting a direct connection to downtown through I-75. So these are sort of the phases that we came up with. The first phase would be to bring back that US 301 route and move the park-and-ride to Gibsonton at I-75. This will sort of give them better connectivity and allow them to still get into that current Fish Hawk Express route to downtown. Phase two, as the interstate expansion continues and the interchanges are finished, we're recommending that they could use I-75 as sort of an express, getting back and forth. And then phase three would be to give them the direct connection back to downtown utilizing, again, I-75 or 301 as constructions going on, and then implementing that southern loop that the community brought forward in the previous study. The final, or fourth phase, would be looking at bringing in that northern loop, and then the fifth phase would be, as the high-speed ferry comes into line, rerouting the express routes to utilize the Fish Hawk Bloomingdale connecting them to the ferry service. These are the costs, about $10 million to $24 million to implement each of the phases, and then this is the forecasted ridership. We also looked at some alternatives to mobility. How do we get the people from their homes in the suburban developed neighborhoods out to the main system? Oops, sorry. Right now, like I said, there's the existing flex service. There's also T-Barda's van pool service. Enterpriseering Latinas also has the Areva service that they're trying to get going. It is partially funded, and they're working with HART to implement that. That'll sort of look at those two ends circulating transit through Wamama and Ruskin better, as well as the Sunshine Line operates in this area, and then the first mile-last-mile solutions. So what we're proposing is mobility hubs. These mobility hubs would sort of be located throughout the neighborhood along the main lines, and they'd sort of be multimodal and allow people to sort of relax and wait for the bus. These are some of the proposed locations. We're not subscribing to these. These are just some locations that we thought could be good for this sort of service. So there'd be a northern zone and a southern zone, so this would replace that flex service that HART has today, and allow people to sort of on-demand call and get a ride to one of these zones on the line, and then get into the mainland service. We also worked with the county and state, looking at some public lands that could possibly house some of these mobility hubs, so that's also an option that we're recommending. So that's pretty much the summary of the study. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this report, Sarah. I remember back in 2014 when this was first presented. I have a question that, I'm not sure if it's for you, maybe it's for our executive director, but when, obviously, this was generated by the MPO, and it's coming before us just as information, but my question has to do with, okay, so when we get this type of information, or when the Planning Commission gets this type of information on proposed or future transportation improvements, what do we do? Okay? With it?
Well, what we do as a staff is we coordinate then with, if you can flip back one screen, Sarah. For example, if we are, if we see rezonings or plan amendments in areas that are proximate to some of these potential sites for these mobility hubs, or park-and-ride lots, or if we're getting in applications that are proximate to where some of these transit lines might be, we might talk with the applicants about the opportunities to provide some of these improvements. It also provides guidance to, if somebody came in for higher density or intensity along one of these areas, it might be a reason, another, another reason why we might support it, because it would foster, you know, it would be located along one of these transit lines if we had the lines map.
I'm sorry, but as, as these, as this project, let's say, moves forward, and, and some of these mobility hubs start to come to fruition, let's say, does that now mean the Planning Commission starts to look deeper, or take a deeper dive in terms of what's happening at those locations, and coordinate that with, I don't know, other aspects of the 2040 plan, or, you know, are the trends that are happening in those areas in terms of land use?
Absolutely, we could. It depends to some degree on the scale of what is being proposed and what's happening around it, but absolutely, that's something I think that could be a next step, is for us to start to look at what kind of urban design and land development code standards are needed to have land use that supports this in these areas. I think that's, that's what we anticipate doing, for example, on a larger scale with the transit-oriented development.
That's where I was headed with this.
Yeah, and this is sort of like a more, a more lower scale, I don't know what the right term is. It almost could become kind of like our park-and-ride stations that are in the TOD station concept already.
Type, yeah.
Yeah, station types. We have that station type. It's almost as if this is proposing a new station type that's the mobility hub for this type of bus service, as opposed to something more fixed guideway like the TOD was anticipated. So I think as we look at all of it, we might, you know, look, do we need, do we need policy guidance that begins to direct towards this? The unincorporated county's plan was last updated in 2008, and a lot of thinking in regards to a number of things, but particularly with regards to transit and transit services evolved since then. So I think as we update that, which hopefully we'll be doing with the county over the next year or so, it's an opportunity to incorporate some of these concepts in a different way.
Okay. I also think this is, Sarah, remind me, was a similar study done for Northwest County?
Yes.
Okay. So I see similarities here as well, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Commissioner. Sarah, and I don't know, maybe this is better answered by Melissa, but on our park-and-ride stations, are those where we just have like a joint agreement with landowners to just allow the public to park there, or is that something where we have to go in and purchase that?
HART handles those contracts. A lot of them historically have been churches, because those are the easier contracts. They do have some agreements with shopping centers as well. There's, having some issues with the Brandon Mall currently, so how to move out of there. So they're trying to, instead of having these small pocket park-and-rides everywhere, have more centralized regional park-and-ride lots. So they are looking at updating, but HART manages all those contracts.
Okay. I was just curious, because I know, like, on Gibsonton Drive, there's really not a whole lot outside of the large development that they've done there with the Super Walmart and, you know, and all of that, but.
I believe they do have an agreement with that Walmart to utilize spots there. They just aren't currently doing it.
Okay, all right. Because I was hoping that if we do something there, that it will be on Gibsonton and not like on Sims Road, because I just, so much easier access to 90, you know, to 75, excuse me. And then you had a slide a second ago that showed like the number of trips, and I didn't get to see that, and I didn't know if that was, is that number of trips, or is that number of people?
Daily riders.
Daily riders, okay. All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Moreno?
First of all, I really appreciate the inclusion of golf carts in the Sun City area. My grandparents lived in Sun City, and it came to a certain point where they could not drive anymore, but they could drive a golf cart, which seems kind of crazy when you think about it, that a golf cart was okay to drive on a road, but a car wasn't. So my question is then, with the flex service, because you mentioned sort of the mobility locations, would those, if you were to, if you were to kind of project this forward, if there is to be some sort of park-and-ride, say at that entrance of King's Point right there, can you, is there a potential to work on agreement with Sun City, with the developer, to make sure that you have enough golf cart space, or, I mean, is that kind of the next phase of this, to see what type of ridership is going to be, and what type of park-and-rides to understand whether or not there's going to be a demand for that?
Yeah, there definitely is going to be some, working with the private sector to make sure that those agreements are in place. And then on top of this study that we're concluding, the county currently has their golf cart master plan for the area as well. So I'm pretty sure some additional recommendations as far as where to store the carts and that kind of stuff will come out of that study as well.
And then the, because you mentioned here, the agreements with Sun City and King's Point, residents can ride Hart bus with valid ID. Can you give any sort of indication of what the feedback was from the residents in Sun City? Because, yeah, that community is really built to age and place, but it also, there's a lot of the community that doesn't have sidewalks.
Yeah.
When you get further back in the newer part of the development. So was there a sense from that neighborhood that, you know, we definitely need something like this, we're willing to participate further and be actually be riders in the future?
Through both studies, we've gotten a lot of interest from the community of wanting to have a more robust transit system, so we have gotten good feedback. And like I mentioned, when we did the first study, we brought in stakeholders, and they sort of drew out their routes, and largely, this is their plan that they've come up with. So, yeah, we have worked closely with the community. We had our last stakeholder meeting post the referendum, so that we'd sort of know what we're looking at as far as funding going into the last meeting, and I think the big sentiment was, all right, so when do we get something? So, working with HART, I've been having lots of conversations trying to get back maybe their express route sooner than, in the later years and that kind of stuff. The, Jeff Seared, when he was still interim, has suggested bringing back the weekend service on the US 41. So I think we've got a lot of good feedback. They're just ready for it, so.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you. I had a quick question on if we considered, right, there were certain factors leading to, you know, the HART's downsizing recently. I'm just wondering if we took those factors into account in our updating, right, of the 2014 study, and if we did, we might not have, but if we did, how did those factors impact our, you know, the changes that we came up with?
Yes. Ridership is hard in a more suburban growth pattern. There didn't see these, just aren't there. So that's why we looked at, how can we sort of address the first mile-last-mile solution through this? We know that this is the fastest-growing portion of the county. As it continues to grow, there's, the demand's going to grow. There, it's just, it has to, especially with their limited roadway network they have down there. And I could see this study coming back in a few more years, once those neighborhoods continue to develop and new connections are made within the existing roadway network and shifting buses so that they're actually closer into the neighborhood so people can get to it. So I think this is sort of the first step of dusting off that last study, making sure that we can try to implement something now that we have a funding source, and how do we sort of build it as the demand grows?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number five, Port Tampa Bay Permit Number 17-028.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Sean College with Planning Commission staff. This item is Port Tampa Bay Permit Number 17-028, titled Rattlesnake Channel Redevelopment. This port permit was transmitted to the Planning Commission with a request for a consistency determination with the city of Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and that's per chapters 95-488 and 97-351 Laws of Florida. This is the location of the project, that's the subject of the port permit. You can see that's just south of Gandy Boulevard, on the west side of the South Tampa Peninsula. This graphic is zoomed in a little bit more. You can see that it's just to the south of the Gandy Boat Ramp, encompassed in the area by, surrounded with a red, a red line. One feature I will point out to you is, right in the center of that basin is a long, narrow peninsula of seawalled, earthen-filled peninsula. peninsula of seawalled, earthen-filled peninsula. That's technically called a mole and that is part of this project that would be proposed to be removed. So existing conditions of the site in question, this is an existing dredged basin, it's already been dredged previously, there is existing seawalls throughout this area, and there's no residential upland use being redeveloped at the location. The proposed project would, would build 149 slip marina. There'd be fuel and a sewage pump out offered at this location and riprap limestone or concrete blocks for shoreline stabilization would be included as well as a living or enhanced shoreline for a portion of the, of the site. As I mentioned, the upland mole would be removed to accommodate the slips and maintenance dredging would be performed to make sure there is even adequate depth throughout the area for the proposed boat use. Considerations for consistency with the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Again, this is an existing dredged basin, we're not talking about new dredging. There are marina needs in the area of Tampa Bay. Manatees would be protected, there would be manatee signage at different locations alerting boaters, boaters to the presence of, potential presence of manatees. And there are no environmental impacts associated with the project other than, other than just the, the maintenance dredging and such, but there are no living marine resources of note, no seagrasses in the area. With those considerations, staff would recommend that you issue the resolution in your packet with a finding of consistency with the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item? Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, any questions from Commissioners? Okay, no questions. Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Powell?
I'd like to make a motion that we find the, oh, my screen went away, but that we find the, uh, plan consistent with the Hillsborough County Planning Commission Comp Plan.
Okay. Well, the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Tampa, yes, sorry.
Tampa Comprehensive Plan, okay. So we got a motion by Commissioner Powell, we got a second by Commissioner Green. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion to find Port Tampa Bay Permit Application Number 17028 consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Conference of Plan? Please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number six, 2018 Measures of Effectiveness Presentation.
Tatiana Gonzalez, Planning Commission Staff. This is an annual update on the performance metrics that were proposed in 2016. Since that time, all of the metrics have been implemented and this presentation will summarize the 2018 Measures of Effectiveness Report. So the following goals, the report addresses the following goals and the implementation of them in fiscal year 2018. And these are outlined in the Performance Evaluation Criteria of the Executive Director. And the purpose of Goal One is to raise the awareness of the agency's projects and initiatives through public education efforts. Goal Two is to provide excellent customer service. Goal Three is to develop planning resources, ideas and studies that are innovative and helpful to the community. And Goal Four is to develop and monitor these agency-wide performance measures so we can report on them annually. The first goal is outreach and education, and this has a number of subcomponents. And the first is for the agency to present every year to at least 25 community or business groups every year. And in 2018, this goal was exceeded by an additional 76 presentations for a total 101 presentations. So we did great on that goal. Our next goal is, our subcomponent of this goal is to produce user-friendly materials for the public. And in 2018, we added an accessibility widget to our Plan Hillsborough website. And one of the methods that's used by visually impaired visitors to our website is called a screen reader and it's a device that allows all the text on the webpage, text or links and images to be read out loud. So this new accessibility widget now provides viewing options to those visitors who have visual or other impairments and they can't use a keyboard or a mouse. Another search tool was added to our Plan Amendment section of the Plan Hillsborough website with the goal of making it easier to find key information. Now this tool allows users to search current plan amendment requests and it also grants access to historical plan amendments, uh, data going back to the year 2000. Finally, we also enhanced our public mapping tool, the Hillsborough County Health Atlas. And this, new this year is the addition of information on urban heat islands identifying county hotspots and temperature variances. Staff also increased its outreach efforts last year by participating in 213 events, largely due to the It's Time Tampa Bay Campaign. And this was an extensive multimedia campaign that featured media interviews, presentations, and interactive displays at major events, asking citizens to weigh in on transportation and growth scenarios in our region for the first tri-county long-range transportation plan. And we partnered with the Tampa Bay Times and Florida's largest home show and particularly our partnership with Beasley Media Group generated a new public engagement method for the agency, which included radio interviews and public service announcements. Our next goal is customer service. Now, staff assisted approximately 3,220 clients in 2018 with land use planning, environmental, demographics, or transportation projects. In 2016, the agency began providing these customer service surveys to the public to gauge the agency's performance in providing these services. And of those services returned to us last year, 100% found the overall quality of service to be excellent or good. Our most requested service was transportation assistance, followed by other general requests. Land use planning, research and data, and mapping requests share the number three spot of most requested service. An annual survey is also sent out to our four client governments to evaluate how we are meeting their needs. And on average, the agency received ratings of good to outstanding with regard to interactions with staff and on how well the agency is meeting its core values. Part of the agents, uh, agency's customer service goal is to foster new partnerships with organizations by providing them with services and information, creating joint projects and ongoing collaboration, building relationships with underrepresented groups and supporting their work. As part of its ongoing efforts to promote traffic safety, the Hillsborough MPO developed a Vision Zero Action Plan based on the principle that death and injury on the streets is preventable. In 2018, MPO-sponsored events such as Walks of Silence and Painted Intersections are raising awareness of the problem and developing ways to reduce traffic-related fatalities and injuries in conjunction with partners like FDOT, HART, AARP, the Hillsborough County Public Schools, the Tampa Downtown Partnership, and the Westshore Alliance, to name a few. Another partnership that was generated was with the Coalition of Community Gardens through the Garden Steps Project. Garden Steps was established in 2016 to improve community health in Hillsborough County by connecting and growing a network of community gardens while addressing the social, physical, and policy infrastructure needed for healthy communities to thrive. And cultivating pedestrian, bicycle, and transit access to the Tampa Community Garden, Tampa Heights Community Garden, was accomplished in partnership with the Hillsborough MPO and the City of Tampa Transportation Department. And the program has also supported two pop-up community gardens in noted urban food deserts. And a new partnership with the Senior Connection Center offered an opportunity to support the health and wellness of older adults through cooking demonstrations. Now throughout 2018, the Planning Commission also had the opportunity to partner with the Hillsborough County Economic Development Department on several projects. The two agencies worked together in developing policies for the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan that reflect goals for job creation and retention. Also, the recently completed East Rural Assessment was developed with input from economic development, particularly their agribusiness and county extension staff, which ensured the assessment accurately reflects the types of agricultural production in our community and resulted in data helpful to the agricultural community and planners. The third goal is proactive planning efforts. And the first subcomponent of that goal is to produce, for the agency to produce at least six products each year that are either planning projects requested by a local government or other planning partner and to, and/or to research on innovative planning topics and trends. Now, the following projects listed here highlight a few of the agency's many proactive planning efforts throughout the year. And there are additional projects, as well as detailed descriptions of these projects on the screen, that are included on page five of the report in your packets. Another component of Goal Three is to pursue new grant and partnership opportunities to further enhance the services we can provide. And preparing for major storm events and sea level rise is paramount as a coastal community. The Federal Highway Administration selected the Hillsborough MPO in collaboration with the Planning Commission, Hillsborough County, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and the University of South Florida to be a pilot project to assess our transportation systems' resiliency to extreme weather. The project's purpose is to develop strategies to offset the effects of inland flooding, storm surge, and sea level rise. The FHWA selection was based on a $132,000 grant proposal, which the MPO will use to help identify mitigation projects for the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan. Our last goal is the agency performance measures. And in fiscal year 2016, staff began tracking the consistency findings for our plan amendments. In 2016, jurisdictions agreed with this agency's recommendation on 85% of plan amendment cases. Now, this data has become a benchmark to compare future years. By 2018, the agreement rate has increased to 91%. While staffing levels have remained constant during the time, during this time, the amount of time that staff spends on plan amendment reviews has actually increased. In 2017, staff also began tracking the agreement rate for our rezoning cases as well, and the agreement rate has actually remained steady at 98%. Part of our Comprehensive Plan goals is to direct new growth in the county into the urban service area with the goal that at least 80% of all population growth will occur within the USA. Building permit activity is one measure being used to evaluate whether growth is occurring consistent with the direction of the comprehensive plans. Now, the following map shows all permits issued in fiscal year 2018 throughout the county. The green points are permits issued inside the urban service area boundary, that's the dark blue outline, while the red points are permits issued outside of the urban service area. And development is primarily occurring within the USA at 86.19% issued, permits issued inside. And to break that down a little bit more, there is 25% of permits that are being issued in the Riverview Community Plan area, followed by the City of Tampa at 20%. And there is a further breakdown of all of our community plan areas in the report as The last measure for this goal is staff attendance at public outreach events, the use of resources and the number of people that we communicated with at these events. Now, in 2018, Plan Hillsborough staff participated in 213 outreach events and we interacted with approximately 16,000 attendees. On average, two staff members were present at each event for every 78 attendees. The resources used for these events included printable materials such as brochures, event flyers, trail and bike maps, MPO calendars, and project handouts. The It's Time Tampa Bay Campaign alone generated 1,161 paper surveys. Over 10,000 other promotional materials were also distributed, including slap bands, bumper stickers, rec cards, activity books, bookmarks. And this is one of our newest measures and this will serve hopefully as a baseline for our future reporting. That concludes my presentation on the 2018 Measures of Effectiveness Report. This item is for your information only, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, Tatiana. This is, um, good information. Does this, does this study, does it summarize all of the points that you talked about in, in some way or synthesize it all or it's just, here's the data, here's the raw information?
The, the, there is raw data, but there is also, it's also synthesized. It's a very easy read.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, good, that's all right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, 2018 through 23, Plan Hillsborough Strategic Plan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission Staff. Today, I'll be doing a quick refresher on the strategic plan, which was updated by you all in August of 2018, and really be focusing on how we've been doing in the six months following implementation. So specifically, we'll be focusing on some of the highlights from the first six months. Our goal today is to, to show you some of the high-level, big-picture objectives and how we've been accomplishing them, and then provide to you a comprehensive report at the one-year timeframe. And this is informational only, just so you all have some information on what we've been working on. So a little bit of background on the strategic plan. You all have probably received this report. It was the first strategic plan that was developed jointly by the three boards that serve Plan Hillsborough. So the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Planning Commission, and the Hillsborough River Board. It was adopted by the Planning Commission again in August of 2018 with support, resolutions of support provided from the other boards that compose Plan Hillsborough. And it outlines our short-term or near-term strategic priorities for the agency and the, the ways in which we can accomplish those. So ultimately, the work that you all completed at your strategic planning retreat and the feedback we received resulted in seven strategic priorities. And under each of those strategic priorities, we had strategies with actionable steps that talked about how those would be achieved or accomplished. And today, the way I'll be outlining our work thus far and some of the highlights is looking at, what are the highlights from each of these strategic priority areas? Before I do that, I did want to talk a little bit about the implementation and how we approach implementation. So first, staff developed methods for addressing each of those seven strategic priorities and strategies. We had a number of cross-team meetings to look at what can be accomplished in the near term, what are some things that we can work on and accomplish right away, what are some things that may need more time, more resources? And so we looked at what, what were things that could be done first and establish those priorities and timing. We've also had ongoing discussions internally with the leadership team on our implementation progress, making sure that, that each team is working on the strategic plan and it is a, an objective of each team. And again, today I'll be talking about some of the highlights with a more comprehensive progress report to follow. One thing to mention, there might be a couple of projects that you just heard in the previous presentation, but, but I think that really shows nicely the link between our strategic plan and the performance measures. So if some things look familiar, that's intentional. So the first strategic priority I'll touch on is linking land use and transportation. We had a number of projects that looked at pairing land use and mobility options that we've been working on within the past six months. Some examples of these are the Plant City Mixed Use Gateway. We're also working with HART and the City of Tampa on the Transit Oriented Development Grant. And then as well, looking at some of the land use implications with a group from FSU for autonomous and connected vehicles. We've also taken a proactive approach to map amendments, so not waiting necessarily for the private sector to come along and provide map amendments, but rather when we get these private sector map amendments, looking proactively, looking at the pattern and the trends in the area and developing our own publicly initiated map amendments to address some of those land use issues. So some examples of those are along Columbus Drive and Tampa Street within the City of Tampa. We've also been proactively looking at TU 24 within the City of Tampa to try to ensure that that category is modified to reflect the land uses in the area. And then something that I know Tatiana mentioned to you all, but we have been coordinating heavily with economic development experts and real estate experts on projects. Some examples of, of that are the, the regular meetings with the Economic Development Department of Hillsborough County on Comprehensive Plan Amendments, also the 2045 real estate market analysis that was done. And then in terms of planning partnerships, we have a, a number of ongoing and new partnered projects, so I'll share a couple of highlights from those. projects, so I'll share a couple of highlights from those. We have the East Fowler Land Use Study, which is a partnership with Innovation Place, looking at the land uses along that corridor, partnerships with the universities, FSU, USF. The East Rural Project that Tatiana mentioned was a partnership not only with the county, but also with agricultural interests. And then this week is our commuter challenge, so I thought I would throw out a plug. We're partnering with a number of other agencies on this to try to encourage folks to try a different mode of commuting other than driving alone. Internally, there's really been an emphasis on relationship building, so our morale committee and our community service committee have been looking at planned service projects in different areas that maybe historically we have not had as much of an opportunity to connect with. So how can we make sure our community service projects really go out and focus on those areas and make those connections? We also have a lot of succession planning going on right now. We have a number of upcoming retirements, and so the folks who are retiring are working with some of our newer staff to make sure that those relationships are maintained and that those relationships continue to grow. And in terms of citizen engagement, we're really engaging the community through direct place-based outreach. This photograph here is of a recent Vision Zero mural painting event that engaged not only the neighborhood, but also some of the elementary school students at an elementary school in Seminole Heights. So we're trying to go, go to where the people are, go to the community to talk about planning and do planning work. We also have some strong connections in the university area and with the Housing and Social Services. Again, that's succession planning happening so that those relationships are maintained. Speaking to the It's Time Tampa Bay survey, I know you heard a little bit about it in the previous presentation, that actually was the most successful MetroQuest survey ever done in the United States. We had 9,500 people weigh in with over 250,000 data points, so that was a big way that we engaged the community online and got their feedback. And then we're also working on, and this is an ongoing effort, but enhancements to how data is displayed on our agency website. Is it easy to use? Is it easy to access? The plan amendment database was one way that we looked at that, and we're continuing that effort. We continue to collaborate and coordinate with our regional partners. There are a few examples of this. Of course, you all are familiar with the 2045 scenario that has, the hybrid is being coordinated with both the, both Pasco MPO and the Pinellas MPO. We also recently, when several of us took a little field trip over to Pinellas County, and they are also going through a comprehensive plan update. So we wanted to see what they're doing, see how they're approaching their plan update as we continue to think about the updates to the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And then staff is continuing to support the TMA Leadership Group through the resiliency pilot project and priority projects lists that are occurring. And then for technology and innovation, one thing we're trying to do is to make sure that all staff are aware of all the technological solutions right when they come in the door. So technology has been integrated into our onboarding process. It's something that's now part of our onboarding, make everyone who comes here to work at Plan Hillsborough aware of all the technological solutions that we have. We've also been incorporating a tool of the month in our general staff meeting so that everyone is, continues to be aware and refreshed on some of the technological improvements. There have also been some internal kickoff meetings on enhancing, again, our, our data and GIS public interface. So what can we do to make the data more accessible, more user-friendly? Are there ways that we can share and collaborate with data? Those are other options that we're exploring. And then we're looking at different options to create more user-friendly comprehensive plans, particularly as more and more of comprehensive plans live online. Is there a way to link different aspects of comprehensive plans together? Web-based plans is one option we're exploring. We're just looking at different ways to, to make it more user-friendly and accessible to the public. And then we, in conjunction with the MPO side of Plan Hillsborough, continue to enable different transportation choices. One thing is looking at revenue for a wide variety of future projects and not only, or all sorts of modes for the Long Range Transportation Plan. As I briefly mentioned earlier, actually, this week on Wednesday, a group from FSU is coming down to take a look at some of the land use implications of autonomous and connected vehicles in Tampa and Hillsborough County. So they'll be looking at different areas of the county and how autonomous and connected vehicles might connect there. And then in terms of Vision Zero, we are seeing some of the recommendations from the action plan being implemented. So one example of that is FDOT is providing some funding for high-crash corridors, so that is helping to implement some of the Vision Zero initiatives. And then internally, we're doing a lot to try to enhance the agency and the work that we do and make our projects more effective, more efficient, and provide a better result for our client governments and the public. So we've started doing cross-team project kickoffs. We've done that now for a couple of projects where we ensure that someone from each team is represented. We've also invited external staff from other departments to these so that we get an external perspective, make sure we're, you know, understanding all aspects of the project from different perspectives. We also, in November of last year, you know, at, at Plan Hillsborough, we, we hire consultants to do, help us with some of the, the project tasks. And we had an opportunity to invite some private sector planners to come and share with us, you know, their perspective on project management and how there may be things that the public sector is, is less aware of or may not be exposed to, and that really will help us as we put together these projects, put together these proposals, and so we got that feedback as well. And then we have just finished mapping out our 2019 schedule for our institutional knowledge and leadership and development training sessions. We'll be holding those once a month for staff to make sure some of the institutional knowledge about many aspects of what we do is not lost, make sure that we are enhancing our professional development through things like classes on communication and, you know, collaboration. So, so those are all in the pipeline for this year. And this concludes the overview of the highlights. I, I will be back in August to share a more comprehensive annual report, but this concludes the presentation today, and I'm available if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Melissa, thank you. I'm looking at that, Melissa, and I'm thinking about you, okay? Thank you, Melissa, for that report.
Sure.
Can you go back to that slide on technology and innovation? Okay, there was, okay, this is second bullet point that talks about enhancing data and GIS public interface. As I'm, I'm sort of curious, as I'm pretty sure my, my colleague, Mr. Josephs, is also interested in this, in this data that the Planning Commission sort of acquires, and what becomes of it? I mean, how do you, you know, or what can be done with it? I guess that's, that's my biggest question, okay? Because I think this is, I mentioned this to Melissa years ago when I, I think I first came on the Planning Commission or shortly thereafter, I said, "My goodness, the Planning Commission is a repository of all this information, but what are we doing with it? Or what can be done with it?" Okay, so I'm not sure. Either Melissa can address that.
I'll take a stab at it. So I think there are a couple of different things. One, we've been trying to continue to provide tools that allows it to be accessible to the public, things like the Health Atlas that we developed over the last two years, I guess, has taken a body of, of, a segment of the data and pushed it out in a format that we hope makes it accessible in a geographic format. So one of the things that we're talking about is are there other aspects of the data that we have? We have a, we similarly have a viewer for transportation improvement projects. You can look at our land use that way. We've pushed out the plan amendments in a geographic fashion. So what else? What else can we make more integrated for the public so they can see some of the relationships between things and access it in an easier fashion? So that's some of the discussions. The other aspect of the discussion that has been around, how can the planners better use the data in formulating the recommendations that come to you all or to the local governments on things like zonings? So for example, one of the tools that maybe we'll have one of the team come and present soon is we've developed a tool that is a floor area ratio calculator. So it, if you draw around an area, around a piece of property, it can tell you what the average floor area ratio in, in the surrounding neighborhood is. So then the planners can use that. I think it also does density, but the name of it is the floor area ratio. But anyway, it helps.
That is a density.
Yeah, it helps calculate it. So then the planners can say, "Well, this is, you know, pretty common in the area. This is a typical floor area ratio." It can also help us in some of our proactive studies to see, okay, well, we're not really achieving the floor area ratio, for example, along Fowler Avenue that is adopted in the comp plan. How can we bump it up? So, so that's a tool that just recently, I think, has moved from the beta version to a ready-for-prime-time thing. So, but those are the types of things, looking at how we can get the data in a fashion that the planners can then use it better in making recommendations for you all.
Okay, well, that was, that's essentially the crux of my, my question. I mean, we've got this, this, this data, and of course, in these days and times, you know, of course, whoever has the data is, you know, is king, so to speak. But, but, but it's good to hear that you're, you're identifying ways in which to, to process it and to turn it into tools that, that can be used either in-house or, or by the general public. Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Doughty?
Yeah, well, it's, I'd like to kind of follow up just a little bit on it, and it, dovetails a little bit with the previous presentation for the Measures of Effectiveness because one of the things that jumped out at me during that presentation, when they were talking about the number of plan amendments and where they were located, there were, you know, 25% of the plan amendments were in review. And, okay, well, but does, does any of that trending impact our comprehensive plan updates if, if something's happening in an area that we may not have predicted or, or followed? I mean, it's the same thing. It's all, the data can tell you and help us be a little bit more nimble, I guess.
Yeah, and actually, one of the components to Tatiana's presentation, so the, that part of the, that goal was the newest piece added, looking at the performance of the comprehensive plan goals was added to my performance review last year, so this is the first year we've measured it. And what we found was we actually didn't have a lot of good geographies defined to be tracking this information. So the urban service area was an easy one because we definitely have that defined. And actually, one of the next steps she's taking for next year's report is to establish some geographies for each of the local governments. The county had a lot with the community plans. We have defined boundaries for those. But working with Mr. Hudson on what areas might we want to track in Plant City or in Temple Terrace that maybe they're annexing in a certain area? Do we want to track how the development is going into the annexed area? Plant City has goals in Midtown, along County Line Road. They've put in infrastructure. Should we be tracking where that infrastructure improvement has gone in? Has that generated new development? We've talked about doing that, for example, in Palm River where they've extended water and sewer lines. Maybe we should track how the development has gone based on that. So, so the addition of that to the performance review measures sort of opened up this whole new segment of how we could use the data to begin to track how development is occurring. Is it consistent with our plan? Is it, is the plan really directing it? Are, are other things like infrastructure improvements really more influential than some of the plan policies? Things like that. So, so I think we just cracked the surface of that this year.
Keep going.
Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great report. Obviously, I love it. I love anything that has to do with data. I did have one challenge that I wanted to put out to staff and you guys. I think the internal, when it comes to what we're doing with technology and information, right, we're talking about the way we're linking to community, and I think that's great, you know, the Health Atlas and all these things we're putting out, great connection to community. I think internally, this idea about the tool of the month thing is, that's brilliant. I mean, that's just what Commissioner Green was asking about. That's how you find uses in the data and apply it, right? So I think one challenge I would put out to you guys now is to take it a step further and think about inter-agency connections in that way. How do the tools we create start to affect, you know, the coding department, code department, land code department? And I think when we start to look across departments, then we'll start to sort of see the trends, where we need data for certain trends, like, you know, we were just talking about. So I think that, that would be a great way to sort of take the data, that next step, and start to operationalize a little bit better, inter-agency stuff. That was all from me.
I will, just because you said that, brag on one other thing that we've done. This is a project that Melissa Dickens has been working on called One Water with the Public Utilities and Public Works Department for Hillsborough County, and we were able to, for them, take a whole bunch of different layers, and Melissa can probably describe what they were better, but put them in a GIS viewer. We had made some maps, but allowing them to turn off and on and make all of that data, a lot of it actually was their data. We just packaged it a little bit differently and put it together, making some connections, being able to show how different policies might have different implications, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number eight, A, Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-05.
Thank you, Commissioners, again. Jay Collins with Planning Commission staff. Mr. Hudson and I are here for a briefing this afternoon for the December cycle for the City of Temple Terrace. There are four amendments. The first amendment is 1805. Basically, you can see where these amendments are here. 1805 is actually outlined in yellow on this map. This is located off of Davis Road. Basically, we are just north of Temple Terrace Highway and just south of Fowler. It is a single-family home. You can see on the aerial here on the east face of Davis Road, this is an annexation into the City of Temple Terrace, and you can see the single-family development pattern all around that, as well as a couple of large pieces of vacant land directly to the west. So a little background, again, this is publicly initiated. It's an annexation. It's small scale, being that it's just over a quarter of an acre, and currently in the county has a residential six land use, and in the City of Temple Terrace, it is asked for a residential nine land use. Here is the future land use map today as it is, showing the residential sixes in unincorporated Hillsborough County, as well as the residential nine just to the north and west across the way there. If the amendment were to be adopted, a residential nine. The potential densities and intensities here today, one dwelling unit, it's what's built there. Potential will be two dwelling units. Again, that, that is the maximum density that is allowed under that category. If the amendment were improved, it would just be that increase. There is no consideration for non-residential uses here, such as commercial office or anything else, since it does not meet locational criteria. And that concludes that one amendment. Are there any questions?
Okay, any questions from commissioners on this item? Commissioner Kress?
Out of curiosity, why is Temple Terrace doing this?
That's a very good question. They annex quite often. This particular amendment, I'm not certain as to why, that this one is publicly initiated because some of the others are privately initiated. Mr. Hudson, do you know anything of specifics to this one?
My understanding from Plan, excuse me, Temple Terrace staff is the homeowner is looking to receive public utilities, both water and wastewater, and as a prerequisite of that, they need to annex into the jurisdiction.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the other one. Next one.
So 1806, this is basically located along East Fowler Avenue. We're about 1,000 feet south of the river, a couple of hundred feet from the middle school there. school there. You can see here on the aerial, the north face of Fowler Avenue does have some commercial land uses along it, and you can see further to the north, the single-family detached housing that is behind it. And you can also see the single-family detached housing on the south side of Fowler. That housing that is on the south face of Fowler does not actually interface with Fowler. There is a wall built there for the subdivision. It's privately initiated. Again, it is an annexation. It is small scale, just over half an acre. Today, in the county, they do have a residential six land use, and in the city of Temple Terrace, they have requested a commercial land use. This shows the current adopted future land use map. You can see the residential six in unincorporated Hillsborough County. You can also see the red, the commercials, further to the west, as well as to the east. Those are in the city of Temple Terrace. You can see the river also to the north. And we talked about the middle school, the middle school down there in the lower left-hand corner. Again, if the amendment were to be adopted, the commercial land use. And the potential densities and intensities here today, three dwelling units, just over 6,000 square feet of commercial or office uses. Again, this is a commercial use currently operating in the county. If it were to be adopted by the city council, five dwelling units as part of a mixed-use development. It's a little different in Temple Terrace, commercial uses need to be in a mixed-use vertical building. Or just over 12,000 square feet of commercial or office uses. If the amendment were to be improved, basically, you would see an increase of the potential densities and intensities on that site. Are there any questions to this amendment?
Chair, but I'm sorry.
Commissioner Green?
Can you go back to that previous slide? So this potential density, now it's either the five dwelling units or the 12,000.
No, you can do a mixture of the two, but there is, of course, an equivalency matrix, if you will, as you go in with one and something else comes out.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, move on to the next one, 18-87.
Yes, sir. 18-07, this will be familiar to most of you, being that this is right across the street from another amendment, 18-04, that we had in this previous cycle. This is a continuation of an industrial park out there, basically off of 301, just south of Harney, where there's continuous interest in annexing into the city of Temple Terrace. You can see here on the aerial map, it is currently vacant. The area directly to the west is the area that I just spoke of that was actually annexed and has gone through its plan amendment process, and staff here is in the process of actually sending that amendment to the Department of Economic Opportunity. So this is privately initiated, again, an annexation. It is small scale, being just over 2.2 acres. Currently, in the county, has community mixed-use 12, the city of Temple Terrace, for an industrial land use. You can see here currently the adopted land use of that community mixed-use 12, as well as the industrial further to the west. If it were to be adopted, the industrial. And here are the potential densities and intensities. Again, in this one, we would be removing residential consideration from the site and injecting a little bit more industrial square footage into it, being that the floor area ratio for industrial in Temple Terrace is .65, whereas the floor area ratio for community mixed-use 12 in the county is .5. And with that, that is the final one for this particular amendment.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, no questions, we'll move on.
Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. The last plan amendment that we are processing this cycle for the city of Temple Terrace is Temple Terrace CPA 18-08. Like the previous three plan amendments, this one also is a voluntary annexation, however, it is larger than the previous three. It's located north of Fowler, south of Fletcher, in an area of unincorporated Hillsborough County, as you can see from the locator map in front of you. In general, it's south of East Telecom Parkway, east of Hollow Stump Road, north of the Hillsborough River, and west of Morshbridge Road. This is a little bit better idea, give you a better idea of the location of the plan amendment. The site is located with the lavender line, dash line. They are not bringing in the entire parcel, because they would be precluded from doing so based on the statute of requirements of annexation. It would create an enclave. So they're replating the property and bringing in the majority of the parcel that they can, shown by this aerial. You can see to the north, there's some residential neighborhoods, and there's a research corporate park to the west. This is privately initiated, and I already mentioned it's a voluntary annexation. It is over 10 acres, so unlike the other three, this is, will require state and regional review. It's approximately 35 acres. The current land use is Hillsborough County community unit mixed, excuse me, community mixed-use 12, and they requested Temple Terrace urban mixed-use 20. I'll try to describe the colors on this map. I'm usually dealing with primary colors. This is a lot of pastels, but, and some people may dispute the colors as I see them, but predominantly, the color that is encircled by the plan amendment is more of a mauve. That represents the community mixed-use 12 of Hillsborough County. To the west is the Research Corporate Park in Temple Terrace, which is more of a salmon color. And to the north is the lavender color of the Temple Terrace mixed-use 20. If this map amendment was approved by Temple Terrace City Council, the colors would be that lavender color, which you see already to the north of East Telecom Parkway, would also be this area to the south. What is the maximum density intensity potential for this plan amendment, if approved? We're primarily analyzing on, based on the increase in potential dwelling units, from 423 to 705. There are opportunities on this site for commercial and industrial uses. You can see those numbers are rather large, 768,000 approximately square feet, and with the adoption, 1.5 million. However, both the Hillsborough County plan and Temple Terrace comprehensive plan would greatly reduce that number based on the policy direction in both plans, and particularly the locational criteria. So the expected development is actually more in dealing with residential development. And our analysis that you'll see in our report next month will concentrate on that, since that is both the desire of the applicant and also the vision for the area, based on both of those comprehensive plans. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions from Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number nine, City of Plant City Plan Amendments, 18-08.
Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. We're processing only one plan amendment for the city of Plant City this month. Normally, we average about three to five, and we expect that number to get back to its normal level next cycle. But for this cycle, we have one, PC CPA 18-08. This is the, it shows you the general location. It's in a northwest quadrant of Plant City, north of Baker Road, which is also US 92, between North Enterprise Street and North Whitehurst Road. This shows you a little bit closer view of the area on an aerial. There is a commercial corridor that goes along US Highway 92, West Baker Street. On the east side, there's the, on the edge of the aerial, is the property that is utilized for the Strawberry Festival, which we'll be gearing up for shortly. And of course, both to the north and to the south are further field from US 92, our residential development pattern, both in R12 and R6. And you'll see that more clearly when I bring up the future land use map. This is a privately initiated map amendment. It's small scale. It's only less than an acre, just under an acre. The current land use is residential 12, and the applicant is asking for commercial. This shows you the site, and some interesting things about this site is, it already has historical commercial zoning on the site. It only has access via the commercial corridor to the south of US 92. However, it does have a residential land use, and it doesn't meet locational criteria. The applicant desires to develop the site entirely with commercial uses, and therefore has initiated this plan amendment. You can see the red color of the corridor for the commercial areas, and you can see around this plan amendment site is some residential development with a land use designation of R12. And a little bit further north is R6. And as I mentioned, the Strawberry Festival grounds, you can see further to the east in that public, semi-public, blue color. If the plan amendment was approved, you would see the color transition from that brown color or dark yellow color to the red color for commercial. What is the impacts of the potential development? If approved, currently it has allow, excuse me, currently would allow 11 dwelling units per acre. With that change, it would drop that potential to three. The existing site has non-resident development potential of 14,000 or almost 15,000 square feet. However, it doesn't meet locational criteria for commercial office. So for example, you could build a church on this site currently, but you couldn't utilize it for commercial office uses. With the approval of this plan amendment by the Plant City Commission, the square footage of that non-residential development would not change, however, they would be allowed to develop it with commercial office uses. Staff will be presenting the report to you and our recommendations on March 11th at a public hearing. And that stands for any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, is this, is this property attached to what's fronting, in front of it, facing Baker Street anywhere?
Yes, it actually is. I should have pointed that out a little more clearly. It's difficult to see at this scale, but it's basically a flag lot.
Right.
And you can see its actual access is to the south on South Baker. Now, the applicant also owns the property directly to the east as well. So by developing this, he could also get access to Whitehurst as well.
Okay.
But if the lot was sold off and was a standalone lot, and the applicant didn't own the adjacent parcel, its only access would be from US 92.
Okay. And that's that little thin strip?
That little thin strip, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our Executive Director's Report.
Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. At your seat, you should have my report, just a couple of highlights of things that have been going on in the last month. I had the opportunity to go out to USF to present Dr. Genshaft with the Executive Director's Award, that she wasn't able to be at the Community Design Awards to receive in person, but got to go out and give that to her at one of her meetings with all her vice president people. I don't know that it has a name, but anyway. So that was really nice. Pardon me? I don't know. That's okay. The, Beth and I have, Beth Alden and I have been meeting with a number of the newly elected representatives from our delegation to just introduce them to what the Planning Commission and the MPO are doing. The MPO has taken a couple of positions on some local bill, or some bills that would have local impacts, so been letting them know about some of those, because transportation is a hot topic with the legislature. Also have been working with the county and their hired consultant, Bruce Cohen, on the fee study, some of the data that's needed for that. Steve Griffin's been leading that for our agency, but they're also, they're looking at what the updated fees should be, not just for us, but also for development services, for things like rezonings and other activities there. And looking at, are there efficiencies, since we both are participants in those processes? Are there ways that we might be able to do our work together more efficiently? One of the other things is that internally, we have a sustainability committee, and they've been meeting regularly. And one of their ideas is that they would like to see if the Planning Commission would be willing to go paperless for the April Planning Commission meeting in celebration of Earth Day. So that means that those of you who have paper packets wouldn't get that for the April meeting. And I know there are a couple of you who are holding on to those. And so I wanted to see if there was agreement to doing this, before just agreeing to what the committee had suggested. And that this would give us time to work with you to make sure you have the right equipment to be able to view the packet online. I will say, the April meeting, we will not have a really long public hearing, because we have not gotten very many new county plan amendments in. So it shouldn't be a long agenda that you'd be viewing on your electronic device. I've been trying it on my surface today, because I was one of those who had held out with a hard copy packet, too. So I'm trying to lead by example, but let me know.
I'll try. I can try.
Okay. For one month. That's all I'm asking, is for one month to give it a rule. Okay, great. They'll be thrilled to hear that. Please work with myself, or Lionel, or Mike, if there's something from, if you don't have an iPad or something like that to be able to view it on, we've got that for you. So, or we'll get it if we don't have it. For the March meeting, we will be looking at having a budget committee meeting before the regular meeting. We have not gotten dates from the county on our two-year budget submittal and when that's needed, but Felicia and I would like to go over some of the historical and last year data with the Budget Committee, at the very least, in preparation for that coming up in April. We would be looking at a possible workshop after the regular meeting. We're talking to FDOT whether or not they're ready to bring back the next multimodal center, which is up in the university area, for some discussion with you all. I would mention that the City of Tampa Tree Ordinance has been transmitted to you all for, and that will be on the March regular agenda items, so that's, that it's a meaty topic, we'll say. And then we have the public hearings on the plan amendments that you just, we're briefed on. And then my last announcement is this week is Commuter Challenge 2019. We hope everybody around the dais and on the viewing public will participate. We've gotten partners with all four local governments joining us. HART, the West Shore Alliance, the Downtown Partnership, PSTA, FDOT, T-BARDA, and Walk Bike Tampa are all participating. If you do participate, please take a photo, take a selfie, something, and if you do social media, hashtag commuterchallenge19 is what we're using. So, thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Melissa? Commissioner Joseph?
I was just wondering, who's on the Sustainability Committee?
Well, it's an internal group of staff who just were interested in the issue. And Allison Ye and Tatiana Gonzalez are sort of heading it up for us, but we've got folks from every team in the agency who just had an interest, and they're doing everything to, we didn't have recycling in this building, and so that committee had taken it upon themselves to take home the bottles and things, plastic bottles and cans that we were generating in the office. Since then, the county just restarted recycling in the building, so we're pretty excited about that. We were the first agency, I believe, in the building to get our little, cute little paper containers to hold our paper recycling. So, things like that, but also looking at how we can educate ourselves. The group organized a tour for us to one of the waste-to-energy plants in the city of Tampa. They also have done some of the, organized some of the outreach events where we went, and we, some of the staff created oyster beds, and I'm not describing it well, but they went out and helped Tampa Bay Watch, I think it was, create some oyster beds in Tampa Bay. So it's kind of a variety of different things, but their major focus right now is looking at in-office sustainability, ways we can do things better, like not maybe buy as many office supplies, keep track of those a little bit better, so we don't have hundreds of staplers, things like that. So that's what brought up the paperless meeting.
Very cool. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move on to other business, Chair's business. I don't have anything, so, any old business? New business? Commissioner Willman?
Thank you, Commissioner Thoreau. In light of the recent text amendment that we received to review for, that created the new land use category for Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, I spoke with Melissa to look at some things that staff might be able to do that would help provide some more information and more time for us to review those type information and more time for us to review those types of applications. And so, I just wanted to bring that up and maybe Melissa can provide some feedback on that as well.
Sure. Thank you. We are in the process of looking at our Plan Amendment Procedures Manual and mostly for fine tuning, streamlining some things, making it more clear about what the process is. And that certainly would provide an opportunity for us to look at the process for a text amendment and whether or not it should be any different from a regular map amendment in terms of either what is required on the application, is there additional review time or data and analysis that's needed? This has also dovetail, complements two other things that are going on. One, we recently had a text amendment that also was accompanied by a Land Development Code Amendment for the county, both privately initiated. And in the process, for a privately initiated Land Development Code Amendment, there were a number of additional steps going to the Board of County Commissioners, getting their sort of authorization on what was needed for that text amendment and its review in terms of public outreach in the area that it would apply to. And that struck me that there were extra steps in that process that were not in the text amendment process for a comprehensive plan amendment. So, I think, given that recent experience, that, that makes it sort of timely. The other aspect is that the fee study is looking at, is there a difference in the amount of time it takes staff to look at and review text amendments? So, we should be getting some data out of that as well that might be useful to this discussion.
Would, would that lend itself possibly to a workshop or I guess once?
Yeah, I think once we have some options, I mean, one of the things that first comes to mind is that we should probably look at some of the other counties and cities about how they treat text amendments. Do they allow them with the same frequency, the same application, things like that? So, I think to develop some options for you all, and I think then that'd be very appropriate to have a workshop to talk about.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wilman?
If you'd like, I could put that in a motion for us to act on. Would that be appropriate?
I guess, you, you can make the motion. I'm not sure exactly where the motion's going, but yeah, in terms of acting on or in terms of?
Right, just to make sure that we've got consensus to move forward with staff being able to.
Yeah, if you want to make a motion. I think staff was, it sounds like they're doing it anyway.
Okay.
So, but if you'd like to make a motion, you're welcome to.
If it's not necessary, that's fine.
I don't think it really is necessary because I think, Melissa, you guys are planning on doing that right now anyway, right? And you're going to bring it back to us?
Yeah, well, we could, we could, I think that what Commissioner Wilman's bringing up is perhaps directing us to a little bit more research into this area than we otherwise would. But if, as long as there's consensus and nobody objects to us doing that research and looking at the options, I'm fine with that as direction to me.
Yeah. I mean, I think it sounds good and I mean, if no one objects, I think, I don't think we really need a motion, but I do think it sounds like a good idea. So, thank you. Any other new business? Committee reports? Commissioner Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do a short committee report for the Hillsborough River and a Local Planning Board Technical Advisory Council. In addition to our normal, our normal duties of, you know, having elections and reviewing and providing recommendations on Port Tampa Bay permits for docks and seawalls and that sort of stuff along the Hillsborough River, we also had a, had a presentation from a Libby Carnahan with Florida Sea Grant, University of Florida, IFIS Extension on sea level rise and climate change and effects on Hillsborough River and the overall region. And it was interesting, I know Sean College has presented to this group about sea level rise and impacts and, and you've probably seen a number of these things where there are different graphs and curves of the limits of, or the projections for sea level rise and they're widely varied. The, the one thing that I can, brought from this that was pretty interesting to me was at least for Ms. Carnahan, that their, their reports and recommendations were going to drop both, if I'm not mistaken, and Sean might, may correct me on this, but I think they were going to drop both the low and, and the high such that, because there was, I mean, there's a wide, a wide, wide variety between say one foot and maybe 20 feet, you know, difference in things. And, and they were acknowledging that the, the outside extremes were, were not as likely as the, the interim ones. So, that was going to make it a little bit easier, more palatable and less, less confusion, I guess, when they present reports. So, that's my report. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A brief summary of last week's MPO Board meeting. The, there were a couple of items that, that generated a lot of discussion among, among board members. The first one had to do with 2019 Safety Performance Targets. And it's sort of like what Tatiana, maybe not, but, but Tatiana talked about measures of effectiveness earlier, but this report, Safety Performance Targets is, I won't say similar, but it's, it's sort of a self-study, if I can use that term. And, and this one is required by FAS, the Federal Highway Administration, for MPOs and DOTs to, to track certain performance measures or targets, let's say, that deal with safety. And, and in five, they, they have five safety measures. I forget what all of them are, but, but this is, it's this information that's reported on a five-year rolling average. And the discussion had to do with what some of the, the graphs that Johnny Wong was, you know, was showing, which suggested we're not investing enough to meet, let's say, safety targets. And, and he, he, he mentioned a few numbers that generated even more discussion about, well, if we spent this much, how much can we assume that will reduce crashes and, and other safety issues, let's say, going, going forward? So, that was, that was a big part of the discussion at the board meeting and I think everybody sort of had some, some comments on, on that one. Another, another issue that came up, this one had to do with legislative updates and in our briefing package for the meeting, there was a, a list of all of the pending, I guess, legislation that's being, that will come up before the Florida Legislature this, this session. And of course, it, it ranged quite, very, let's say, quite, quite a bit, but the, the discussion centered around a lot of the legislation that's, that's, let's say, initiated in places like South Florida, which are clearly being proposed to benefit South Florida is, may have adverse effects on other parts of the state. So, so there was a motion made to transmit a letter to Senator Rouson about, about, there was something in one of those proposed pieces of legislation that, that, that caused the, the board to recommend this, this letter. And they're also going to be visiting, or I think the legislative delegation from the MPO and, and, there's a couple of, a couple, a couple of other people that sort of chimed in and said, we'll be, you know, we'd like to be part of that also. But to go and speak with this South Florida legislator who's proposing this legislation, which clearly is going to have an adverse impact on, on other parts of the state here, let's say. And that was, that was the highlight of the, the board meeting though. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Just wanted to give you an update. We had the monthly meeting of the City of Tampa Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and we were working with city staff on revising the local housing assistance plan to include incentives for developers to, to bring them into the affordable housing market. And as well, we took a tour and you might remember several months ago, I briefed you that the city has had a portfolio of about 130 vacant lots around the city that they wanted to build homes on, so they put an RFP out. There's three participants in that program, Domain Homes, Habitat for Humanity, and CDC of East Tampa. So, Domain has, does have their, their model home built and up and running and we took a tour of that. That's on the 800 block of East Palm Avenue. Beautiful, beautiful home, they did a great job with it. And so, we look forward to that program continuing on and bringing those parcels into the tax fold and cleaning up the neighborhoods and so that's what, we'll continue this month, kind of finalizing the local housing assistance plan because that's, that's due up to Tallahassee very soon.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Commissioner Green?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can I just digress for a moment? And I see Ms. Alden is in the, in the back. Can I, can we ask her to come up and say a few words about this Safety Performance Targets, because I think that's really important? And I think a lot of people are still sort of unclear about, okay, so, so how do we get to Vision Zero and, and, and improve safety all around? So?
So, it's a great question and I'll, and I'll keep this brief and I'm, I'm happy to talk with any of you one-on-one, but setting the, setting the targets is a, it's a, it's a federal requirement for MPOs and for states. And the target has to be for one year out. And what the MPO Board did with its, with its action a week before last, last week?
Last week, yep.
Last week was to set a new target for a year out based on the spending from the sales tax. So, obviously, it'll be a while before we see some of those investments in safety from the sales tax, assuming that it is upheld in court. But we wanted to start tracking, where are we today? And if we, if, if we go to this forecast of 20 years out based on the sales tax spending, where should we be? And then we can track against that trend line, how are we actually doing? So, so that was, that was the basis for the calculation. It was a 3.4% annual reduction on average in crashes and we hope to come back to you with good news at the end of the year.
And Mr. Chairman, the reason, the reason why, I guess it generated a lot of, a lot of discussion is, is exactly for that reason. I guess people were asking, well, if we spend this amount, will that, will that help us reduce crashes or, or safety in this, in this area? But the, there's, there's one part of this reporting to the feds that I still have a problem with and I know it's required, but I just find it somewhat morbid. We actually have to project how many deaths are going to occur every year and report that to the federal government. And the first time this was presented, I asked Johnny, I said, okay, the next time you, you present to the board with this information, have, show us, compare, you know, have something else to, you know, to, to show us what we're doing right or good in terms of safety. Because this number, I mean, I think next year's, this year's, we're projecting 188 deaths in this community. Okay? And, you know, that's, but we have to tell that to Washington, right? That's part of the reporting requirements. But I, I just thought it, well, if we have to report that, let's also, we don't have to report something else, but, but, but let's see, how does that compare with what it is we're doing in terms of safety, how well we're doing rather? Okay? But again, I think it's, I think it's a good way, it's a good study, good way to look at what we're doing or what we're not doing. But, yeah.
It is a, it is a really sad conversation, but the conversation has accomplished what I think our representatives in Washington were hoping it would accomplish, which is that we have had a real dialogue here about where are we with our safety performance and how do our investments help us change that outcome? You know, and, and because of that dialogue that, that Plan Hillsborough has been part of, of looking at the different investment levels and safety programs, you know, we were able to have this conversation as a community about upping our investment in safety and having that safety part of the Alfred Transportation Surtax referendum. So, that's it. I've taken up a lot of your time, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay. We do have a public hearing at 5:30 at City Tampa Plan Amendments. I will not be in attendance. I have a funeral to attend, so Commissioner Wildes will be chairing that. So, thank you. We'll join during this meeting right now.